Fast 10 o'clock hour, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the Governing Body of all their special assessments and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting a regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. At this point, we will, Supervisor Finnegan, if you could leave us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, divided into parts, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, do we have any introduction of new employees?
Okay. I'd like to introduce Jean Corrigan. She's filling our newly created Personnel Technician vacancy with us.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay. I'll just mention, since Jean didn't come up and make a big speech, she has considerable experience in personnel and human resources and through the federal government, actually. How long were you retired? She worked for thirty, forty years. She recently retired and now she's back to work again. So, we're lucky to have her. Excellent. Well, welcome to Del Norte County. Good speech. Must be all the time in the federal government, you learn not to get up in front of them. Okay, thank you, welcome. So, at this point, any other new employees? Okay. At this point, we, any reportable action from closed session from County Council?
Nothing to report.
Okay. At this point, are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Gitlin.
Chair Sullivan, item four, there's a typo, I just want to get it straight, take a look at that and correct that, and I'd like to pull out for discussion, item thirteen.
Okay. We will pull that for discussion. Any other items? Okay, and I had a conversation with the Airport Director yesterday. I am going to pull number eleven, and unless the Board disagrees, direct staff to have a public meeting in Gaski regarding the obstruction of removal of trees out there, just so the community has some input into it. So, we will not actually discuss number eleven. The Airport Director's agreed to have a meeting out there, so.
I just, I might suggest that when you have that public meeting out there, you couch it that people don't get to pick and choose which trees come out.
Yeah.
It's an FAA regulation of what has to happen.
Absolutely, and I think this is just to give the community opportunity. I've had a couple of conversations with folks and they understand it is a deal that they're, it's not, you know.
Most of them have been through before.
Yeah, yeah. So, and any other corrections? Okay. So, at this point, we'll now hear brief reports and announcements for Board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. Supervisor Gitlin, would you like to start?
Thank you, Chair Sullivan. Busy week, busy two weeks. April ninth, after the Board of Supervisors meeting, I attended the Del Norte Tea Party Patriots hosting of a very valuable emergency services meeting, and ham radios were discussed as a way of linking all the fire stations of the five townships. Emergency Services Director and the three other trained, Cindy Henderson, the three other trained ham operators delivered a very poignant, relevant presentation on how we can fend for ourselves, not when, if there's a disaster, but when there is a disaster. On Thursday, April eleventh, I attended the third of my three-part series of education from California State Association of Counties in Sacramento, and received my certification completion, very proud to report. Friday, I met with CHP Lieutenant Mike Riddell for an update on what's going on with the Highway Patrol. I'm happy to report the CHP has nothing negative to report. Also helped a senior who was experiencing a misunderstanding at the Senior Center, helped mitigate that situation. Tuesday, April sixteenth, attended the groundbreaking of the new Masonic Lodge on Tenth Street in Crescent City. The new structure will be a one-story structure, very exciting plans. Also on that date, I met with Search and Rescue Director Terry McNamara and St. George Reef Lighthouse Coordinator Guy Towers on safety improvements to be made to the jetty. Those safety recommendations have been sent down to the Army Corps of Engineers in San Francisco for review and implementation. Wednesday, April seventeenth, I met with constituents from the Del Norte County Humane Society, Animal Regulation Officer, Director Ken Smith, and CAO Jay Serena, in exploring ways how this extremely dedicated staff of volunteers from the Humane Society can further involve themselves in rendering very valuable services to Ken Smith and his staff. Since 2008, volunteers from the Humane Society have donated over 10,000 hours of volunteer service, which roughly translates to about $100,000 in savings to Del Norte County. And a big thank you to Del Norte County Humane Society, and thank you to Ken Smith and in his care for man's best friend, so. Also Wednesday, Supervisor Hemmingson and I met at the regular session of County Goals Four and Ten involving future facilities. I learned that the Department of Health and Human Services is very interested in relocating its alcohol and drug program onto Second Street between the two 101s, North and South. There are no residences in this immediate area, and I would concur, this is an excellent location. The current owner attended the building, will be relocating within sixty to ninety days, allowing the Health and Human Services to occupy this location. Thursday, April eighteenth, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Economic Summit. I was delighted to see, to sit with probably one of the most significant members of our business community in Del Norte County. That would be John Thompson from Trees of Mystery. John's expertise and success in operating trees is without question. I'd like to comment that the chamber staged an absolutely wonderful, superb event to all the guests who were in attendance. I was a bit troubled to learn that the only real growth in Del Norte County at this time is coming from the tribes' contributions. Though I'm pleased that the native contributions to the economy are significant, I continue to be dismayed that the, to the slow response and recovery from the private sector, it disturbs me when I hear there that there will never, and I underscore the word "never," be a road around the park, around the precarious Last Chance Grade on 101. It seems disturbing to me that this continuous and costly work of holding back the mountain would continue decades into the future despite the costs. Someone once told me the definition of insanity is when you continue to make the same mistakes over and over again. Also heard, our employment rate is 12.2 percent, and Del Norte County is only thirty-third out of 58 counties. The individual who represents the state, who is actually employed, made this very interesting remark when he stated conditions could be worse. One could live in Calusa or Imperial Counties where the unemployment rate is well over 20 percent. Well, indeed, it could be worse, but that's no solace to the hundreds, if not thousands, of people who are looking for gainful employment in Del Norte County. So, simply stated, the private sector in our county is in poor condition, and we need to find ways to improve the private sector employment growth. Friday, April nineteenth, I was in Eureka to attend the North Coast Air Quality Management Meeting. I brought up trash barrel burn permits and relaxing some of the restrictions here in Del Norte County. In May, the Air Quality Board will be meeting here in Crescent City at the Flynn Center to discuss this very subject and other agenda issues. A big thank you to Safeway Store 954, Crescent City. Store Manager Brian Ridgely reports that Safeway made a donation of matzah, egg noodles, sparkling grape juice, candles, matzo ball mix, dried lentils, and peas, and other kosher food products totaling about $3,000 to Crescent City's Temple Best Shalones. And a big thank you to the Safeway for that contribution. Also Assistant Store Manager Gary Gravlin wanted to give a big thank you to the Del Norte Little League, and they're underway now, the Little League Council, to spend the council's concessions budget at Safeway. And special recognition will go to Council Members Marie Parisi, Charlene Van Alstine, and League Council President Travis Stover for their confidence and loyalty to Safeway Store 954. Thank you to the Del Norte Little League from Safeway. And my wife and I attended the monthly fish fry at the VFW Post 1381 on Friday, April nineteenth. Saturday, I stopped by the Youth and Family Fair, Earth Day Festival at the fairgrounds, and later stopped by the harbor and took a walk through the big ship, Lady Washington. What a thrill that was. It was a great weekend. Thank you. Chair Sullivan?
Thank you. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you. Started off with a staff meeting. Supervisor Finnegan and I had a meeting with airport staff regarding mitigation at the airport, just looking at some strategies and options that we may have. Did have an Automation Goal Committee meeting, as Supervisor Gitlin said, well, I don't, maybe he wasn't at that one. But anyway, this, on the phone system, we just recently purchased the phone system, which the county bought in-house, savings is considerable. There will be a learning curve, there's a lot of new bells and whistles on it. Hopefully, everybody will get used to that. Had a Pelican Bay Citizens Advisory Committee meeting, along with the normal issues of staffing and budget woes. Greg Lewis, our warden, is retiring. Took him about two years to get confirmed and put in place, and I'm not sure he's been there an entire year as warden. He was acting warden for a considerable amount of time, but now his time is up to retire, so he's gonna take advantage of that and run with it. So, good luck to him. He's gonna be around for a little while yet, but he is retiring shortly. Had a local Transportation Commission meeting, went to the Masonic Lodge groundbreaking, had a Resource Conservation District meeting where their discussion was over new grazing leases. Evidently, the Fish and Wildlife now wants different wording in the grazing leases, so they're trying to get that all squared away, and hopefully there won't be a lapse in time for them to continue their grazing. Future facilities meeting with Supervisor Gitlin, along with what he discussed, we also had, got some information on the old building, department building that's down there next to the courthouse. We're going to attempt to clean that up one of these days when we can find funding, but there's studies that have to be done on asbestos and lead paint and all that kind of good stuff. And then I went to Wairika to a North Coast Interregional Water Management Plan Meeting. We've actually got a new name now. Now it's called the North Coast Resource Partnership, which certainly shortens up the name, which makes it a little more convenient. We didn't have a quorum, we were one short, so we didn't conduct any decision-making business, but we did have several presentations that were very informative. One was from the State Water Resources Control Board. They had a lot of good items. They have actually funded the purchase of property for the UROC tribe for a sustainable forest project. So, that money's out there available, and maybe if staff could look into that, on how they went about that project and maybe find out what they did, because it maybe would be something that we could fit in, that would fit in for us. They also have a down to for disadvantaged communities, which we are. They have loans for funding projects that fit within their criteria of what they'll loan money on, down to zero percent, and then after you do the project, a lot of times they'll just forgive the loan. So, they may have some items in there that we could, that would help us considerable. They also have a cleanup and abatement program, which I kind of asked about since we're receiving gifts from Japan, that we may end up with clutter on our beaches at some point. I know we got a boat, which they want back, which is fine, at least we're gonna get, maybe we'll get it back to them. But there may be monies available, or even grants available, if we run into a problem with cleaning some of that up. And that was about it for me.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, thank you. Immediately following our last meeting, I left for the Coastal Commission Meeting in Santa Barbara. And at that meeting, one of the, there was considerable discussion on the pressure on ag land to be developed throughout California. And so at the next meeting in Marin, they're going to have a workshop on what's happening with ag land statewide, and so it may be, it may be important for someone from here to attend from the conservation group, you know, to talk about the impacts. Following the Santa Barbara meeting, I went to Sacramento and participated in the Democratic Convention there, and all of the constitutional officers spoke, and then I was able to have breakfast with both Perez and Steinberg and talk a little bit about some of the impacts that we have here and some of the needs that we need to move forward on. And I, when I returned, I came back with the airport crud that one gets when you're traveling. And so I missed the economic summit and also the Ships Festival and the Children's Fair because I was afraid that I was going to infect the entire county. So, I did that, but I also last week met with Caltrans staff. They came up to brief me on the 101 corridor proposal that's happening between Eureka and Arcata. And I do have their PowerPoint on it in paper form, if anyone would like to take a look at it. The Redwood Park Association has literally pulled a rabbit out of the hat in relationship to keeping our visitor centers open. And at our last meeting, I had reported that the decision had been made to close the Hayuchi Visitor Center that receives about 44,000 visitors a year. And so that is now going to remain open, and through contributions made by the RPA staff, by the RPA, we will be able to keep the Crescent City Visitor Center open also. So, that I think is really important for the tourism industry, because there are so many people that come here when, in fact, when one Googles Crescent City, they're usually Googling a beach, a redwood, or a trail. So, I'm glad to say that that's going to stay open. I have responded to the Sutter Board to request to review the RFPs that have been put out to try to find out what to do. The medical staff is a little uneasy about it because they weren't able to participate in the actual writing of the RFP. So, I will have some questions that I can bring forward in that process, that I, that we will either ask for additional information from the four respondents that are gonna do this, this report, or I will try to make sure that at least that voice is heard of, you know, because status quo wasn't really one of the options. And so, we need to, it's just now starting to happen, and I've only read the RFP, I have not received the information from the people who have responded to the RFP. And today, the Senior Center Board will meet at three o'clock, and we're finally going to be able to get the release of our, our community block grant monies, because there was a perceived conflict, and that has been taken care of with the city, and so that's gonna move forward. We are on a hair-thin line of enough money, so it's gonna have to be creative thinking on everybody on how we deliver service to seniors in our community. That's about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, I would also request that after our board presentations, that there would be just a brief moment of silence for the Boston Marathon and the tragedy that happened to America.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yeah, I also had a couple of meetings started, as Jerry mentioned, that we had a meeting with airport staff regarding some of the projects that are going on, a possible mitigation. And then Chair Sullivan, myself, and Jay Serena all took off for Washington. We had seventeen meetings in two days, which is a marathon of its own. And I know, I'm gonna leave a lot of the nuts and bolts to Mike and to Jay, but just to give you an idea of who we talked to, we had a, started off the breakfast meeting with Jared Huffman, our representative, then we met with Dianne Feinstein's office, she was in the hallway when we were there. Barbara Boxer, Senator Boxer, Representative Greg Walden's office, Tom McClintock, representative his office. The Senate Committee on Energy and Natural Resources, Senator Liz Murkowski's office, and then of course, we also stopped in and took part in the hearing, the natural resource hearing, where the Forest Service was getting their butts handed to them, and they really got chewed up and spit out by several of the congressmen. Also then had a meeting with the Office of Representative Paul Labrador, who has the Self-Sufficient Community Lands Act, one of the bills going there. Talked with our Representative Doug Lamolfe, met with the Office of Representative Rob Bishop from Utah, talking about national monuments and the like. Met with our old Representative Mike Thompson, had a nice visit with him. Met with Dennis Devey, who is the chief regarding the EAS Essential Air Service program, and found out that that is very healthy. Also had meetings with the Airport Improvement Program Director, with the FAA, talked about our terminal project, talked about RSA project, met with Tyler Hammond, who's on the staff of Representative Doc Hastings regarding Secure Rural Schools and other forest issues. Met again with Jared Huffman, met with Travis, with Peter Defazio's office, and then met with Forest Service with Tim Garcia, and they pulled in Doug Crandall. To give you a little flavor, and all, you know, Mike and Jay get into specifics, most of it was over FAA stuff, over our projects, over the EAS. The EAS, even though, which is the essential air service, which we depend on, as long as there is a budget, is strong, it's not gonna get carved out. So, all the fears that we hear, and all the publications and the rumor mill, we're told not to worry about that, and so we're secure there. They were a little perplexed that we would have so much trouble with some of our local permitting agencies when the feds had already given us all their permits, or at least all the okays, and were just perplexed that, it had gotten so far with the feds, and why wasn't the rubber stamped there, and why weren't we asking for money, and we're still dickering over mitigation with local agencies. The Forest Service, talked about Secure Rural Schools, but not so much with the Forest Service, was more, we talked about Red Mountain, we talked about forest management. And then the common theme was, every time we went to meet somebody's office, they pulled in senior-level people. They pulled in people that we weren't supposed to see. That was the case at FAA, and was the case at Forest Service. So, it speaks volumes for Van Scoyac, for our lobbyist, for Greg Burns. And to give you an idea of how well, how impressed I was with Van Scoyac, is you don't get congressmen, senators, representatives to go to a lobbyist's office. But our meeting started with Assemblyman Huffman coming to Van Scoyac.
Congressman.
Congressman.
That's right. He's moved up.
Yes, he has moved up. Anyway, you don't get congressman to go to lobbyist's office, and he was there, meeting with, I think, us and a couple other groups, some water groups, some Santa Rosa Transit people and whatnot, but so, very impressive. Then had CSAC officer call-ins, setting agendas, went down south for CSAC Executive Board Meeting, where we got an update on the Affordable Care Act implementation and other issues that are facing counties. As you know, with realignment AB 109, trying to fix the baseline there, so everybody's talking about money. I came back and was fortunate and very honored to be the introductory speaker at the, welcoming speaker at the Children and Families Fair, which just, the longer it went on, the more it was really something to behold, was a great job there. Had an opportunity to have a little social with New Judge Chris Daly, there was a reception in Irene Tyne's house, which was very nice, got to see some old friends. And then went back to, got on a plane Sunday to go back to Sacramento to meet with the Department of Corrections, the Governor's Office, Finance, Probation, the Sheriff's Associations, and of course, CSAC regarding the inmate release. For those of you that have lost track, probably four or five years ago, there was a federal order that said reduce the population in the prisons, and they reduced it by about, I think it's about 43,000. And then, of course, we had AB 109, which is transferring out the low level and the non-non-nons to the county, and you have Prop 30, and you have realignment. And so the governor appealed, saying, "Look, we're making a good faith effort," and put it before a three-judge panel. The bad news was that it was the Ninth District Circuit Court. So, they came back admonishing the state of California, saying you have 21 days to get to the population that is 137 and a half, how they came up with that, I don't know, 137 and a half percent of your capacity. And you have 21 days to submit your plan, and then you have to have it in plan and done by December first. So, May 2nd is the 21st day. So, we wanted to get an idea from the governor, what are you gonna do here? Because if you think that you're gonna just dump, and we're talking 9,500 prisoners, okay, a couple of Pelican Bays, more than that. So, we wanted to get an idea of what their plan was. We had already negotiated good faith for realignment, AB 109, and the low levels and the constitutional guarantees, and this is a whole different animal. These are people that would be on parole, that the state would absorb the cost. The problem is, is if they get violated on parole, they're in our communities, they go to our county jails. So, they're gonna impact us one way or another. So, what we found out is, and we, again, the Cabinet-level Director of Corrections, as well as, the Secretary of Corrections, rather, as well as Diane Cummings from Finance, said that they have scored, they have a list, they know, they've identified the 9,500 who are more likely to deal with, but we impressed upon them, no, it's a capacity issue. You know, these are, these are your people, you're not gonna give them to us, it was not part of the deal. If you want us to work with you on implementation of the Affordable Care Act, if you want us to work with you on continuing on realignment, and on the next realignment too, then you will take care of this as a capacity issue. So, what they are planning to do, or what they are considering will be part of it to get down to 7,300 prisoners, is they are gonna open up the fire camps to full capacity again. They are going to ask for new monies out of the May revised to contract with out-of-state prisoners, so they will send them out of state. They will open up a new prison by December in Stockton, I believe. And then they will work on credits and sentencing revision, which is what the court really wants. It's interesting. Without getting too far into it, if you read the decision of the court, they want the fix to be a legislative fix. So, here you have a court that doesn't understand the separation of powers, that is actually trying to tell the legislature what they have to do, and is trying to craft legislation as judges. Pretty interesting concept. So, you know, we'll stay tuned. We're gonna meet again with the, next Monday with the Supreme Court Justice, and then we're gonna meet with the governor on Tuesday, and then Thursday, he's gonna come out with his recommendations. But let's just give you a flavor of, just when you think everybody's worried about county jails, well, there's some huge problems out there we have to deal with. But it was a good discussion, and it was nice to be there. Flew back this morning, well, almost flew to Arcade and the plane broke, and then took a cab the rest of the way. But that was my two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for putting most of the details back to us, too, on, Jay and I'll cover that part, the DC part, so. Supervisor Finnegan mentioned, myself, Supervisor Finnegan, and County Minister Officer Jay Serena. We, last meeting, right after the meeting, basically, the following day, we flew out to DC to meet with our representatives, and because the federal government is the biggest landowner in the community, it becomes essentially important that we have a big line of communication, and sometimes there seems to be a gap at the local level in between the national stuff. So, we had seventeen meetings in two days. I don't think we stopped walking or running the entire time, and we were, what ended up happening, the second day, we were behind, we just, and they completely understood. The neat thing about having that face-to-face with people back there is that usually you'll have legislative conferences, which is an opportunity for county representatives to go back there, but you don't quite get the face-to-face time with senior staff-level people as you do on a separate trip. And this one, which I gotta thank Greg Burns and Nate Potter for arranging all of these meetings, but we had three or four face-to-face meetings with actual congressmen, and then all of our meetings were with chief staff people, so, or senior, senior staff people. So, it was very beneficial on that side. As David mentioned, we, we met with several people from both senators' offices, as well as, we went outside of just California in terms of meeting. We met with- We met with Congressman Bishop's office, who's out of Utah, and they are running the same issue with the Forest Service. The Forest Service is one of our big reasons to go back. One is the, really, the lack of coordination with the local government. There is a big disconnect between what they say in DC and what actually translates to the local level. And what we did find is, these are common problems throughout, throughout the West Coast, and a lot of other states, is there is an ongoing problem with that lack of coordination with local government. So, it wasn't a new thing. In fact, we just happened to be, we had one period where we had a break between visits, and we sat in a Natural Resource Committee meeting, and the head of the Forest Service, Tidwell, just got, just got chewed up, basically, and spit out by a few congressmen on the committee. So, it was, it was that, it's that prevalent of a problem. So, it's good to know that we're not alone with this problem, but it also highlights the need for us to communicate that, to get these things addressed. It was reassuring. One of the things we did find out is our EAS subsidy that supports the local commercial service, we are not one of the airports right now that they're considering cutting, which was, we were kind of up in the air on that as to where it was, and we are kind of the poster child, I think is what, it was said a couple times back there, is that we're the poster child. This is exactly the type of community and type of airport that this subsidy is what it was intended for. So, some of the other ones that they'd mentioned would be cutting, they've got, you know, a major airport like thirty miles away. So, it really wasn't appropriate, whereas we're our major airports, you've got to go to San Francisco or Portland to get to a major airport in that process. So, that was definitely worthwhile, also finding out the process of what's going to be involved with the runway safety area and the terminal, and they are very supportive, and the FAA is of the community going forward with that. Like I said, we can get past the mitigation and get this thing going, get our coastal development permit, we will get this stuff taken care of. We mentioned Red Mountain was an ongoing thing with us, and we had that conversation with several people. We had met face-to-face with Congressman Huffman twice, and he seemed very inclined to get started, and anxious to help Delmar in a lot of different respects. Had a meeting with Congressman Lamolfo, who used to be our state senator, and it was a great meeting with him also, same thing, very face-to-face time with him as well, as well as Congressman Thompson. We had a good half-hour meeting, forty-five minutes with Congressman Thompson as well. So, it's good to maintain those ties, and the more congressional representatives you have working for you, the more likely you are to get things done. We had a meeting with Forest Service, but we went up into Oregon also, Representative, Congressman Defazio's office. It was basically non-stop, so the amount of information that we went through, and the number of people, I'm still organizing all the business cards I got from that meeting. We need to put that sign bigger out front that says, "No cell phones on during the meeting," I guess, so. Yeah. We'll send an email next time on that. So, other than that, it was extremely effective on that, and we've got follow-ups with a couple of different congressmen that want more information about some of the issues we're dealing with. So, I would say it was definitely, and what we had talked on the, on the way back, is that every year, literally, we should be sending, you know, if not us, a couple different supervisors back there to have that face-to-face time, because they don't, Delmar County in the big scope of stuff is not a huge county by any respects, either population size or geography-wise. And West Coast also seems to get a little bit forgotten about as well. Unless you're face-to-face with these people, and they know, and you're describing your personal situations on the ground here, a lot of times you get forgotten about. So, I, if anything, that we hope to continue to have, you know, you know, a couple different supervisors going back on a regular basis to be face-to-face with people. So, very effective meeting. I'll let Jay cover any details I miss, so. And then that, attended Emergency Board of Supervisors meeting, attended Agenda Review, attended the Economic Summit, I was not able to be there the whole time. Some interesting items that were covered, the school district's reformation that's happening right now, the restructuring of what's going on in the district. I was pleased to hear that there are more continuing, or not, career technical education or VOC Ed classes at the high school that I was not aware of. I still would like them to do even more in that respect, because I think a lot of kids can use those skills. We also got a chance to hear about some of the beauty improvements the city has going, as well as some infrastructure problems, projects, excuse me, in the county that are going forward. And we're, we're literally in the last three to four years of some major infrastructure, major goals, the county, city, harbor, everyone is bitten off on, including the Chamber, to Highway 199, 197. You saw the final environmental document came out last week. That's a very important step to getting, to fixing that highway. Broadband redundancy should be done by the end of the year. You've got wastewater treatment plant is done, you've got, as well as, the harbor right now is in the process of being rebuilt out, and airports going forward on those projects, too. So, some, it's good to have a reminder that some good things are happening there, just not in front of you every day. I had dealt with several constituents' calls regarding the airport, saw the Waste Management Authority, Smith River Fire Department, and some other things along that line. Attended the Lady Washington Tall ships deal at the harbor that was neat to see, I'm glad the wind wasn't blowing too much, but it was definitely worth seeing that. And then finally attended my cousin Aaron Finley's surprise fortieth birthday party, so that was a good event to be at, so.
Chairman?
Yes.
Without belaboring the point on the prison issue, something, I did have a conversation with the, with Secretary of Corrections. There are twenty-two thousand illegal aliens in our jails in California. And the irony there is, the federal judges are telling us to dump prisoners, when there's twenty-two thousand that really belong to them. So, pointed out that why can't we contract, even if it was only for five thousand of them, or ten thousand you want to identify, why couldn't you contract with Mexico, for example, for twenty thousand dollars a year, payment arrears? We, it costs us thirty-five thousand dollars a year to house them, you could save money and dump your prison population at the same time, or just give them back to the feds, and so, hopefully that'll take root.
Okay. Okay, so at this moment, we'll, we'll have a moment of silence for the folks that lost their lives in the Boston Marathon bombing. Okay. So, follow-up, we'll go to a brief report from the County Administrative Officer, Mr. Serena.
And I will make a brief, because the two supervisors definitely went over the DC trip very well, and hit all of the details that I can think of. But I would like to kind of reaffirm that the EAS discussions were very encouraging. I think, based on what we heard, Delmar County is, I don't want to say a poster child for it, but we're certainly more than qualified, and it's very cost-effective, on the other hand. We did have one airport that was almost three times as expensive than it was for the, for Delmar County to be subsidized, and they're only thirty minutes from a hub, so they probably will not be long for the subsidy, but as important as that is to Delmar County, that's very encouraging. Regarding the SRS, Secure Rural Schools and Roads, another fairly encouraging, but an issue that we're going to have to stay on top of, there are, there's a lot of legislation being discussed, that'll be discussed amongst the different sponsors, and I think there's going to be some transition period, but they definitely want to go away from the SRS and into some other form of compensation for the rural states and counties. But it was encouraging that they're looking at a transition period, not just going to drop it. Our role was to paint a picture to the federal government, and the, especially the ledge staff, about what those impacts mean in a rural county, and I think we were pretty successful, just in the sense of Delmar County. Primarily, the roads going into the national forest are county roads, and if those roads are not maintained enough to a standard to allow visitors and locals to make it into those back road areas, the policies and plans for the National Recreation Area are moot, because you just won't be able to get there. And I think that they, that did hit home with the staff that we met with, and they understood what that really means in a rural area, and how important that is to the local residents also. Yeah, there was a lot of meetings and a lot of staff. I'm not going to go over all of them. Supervisor Finnegan hit the names of all of them. It is nice to speak directly to the staff of different states and coordinate amongst them, and I think it helps them also understand the issues and also coordinate with the other states, because they may not necessarily be doing that until they hear it from us. On other notes, we've, we're in the middle of employee negotiations, or will be beginning the employee negotiations. We continue to work on the Coastal Trail of Point St. George. We're one step closer, we have a couple of items left to deal with in regards to plans and specifications, preparing for a Phase Two funding. As mentioned earlier, yes, we are working on 700 Fifth Street, which is the old CDD building. We did put out an RFP for the asbestos testing lead-based paint. We did not have anybody show up for the walkthroughs, so we're going to be going after them individually. Obviously, that is also something that would have to be funded through the next budget. We are working on requested budgets, they were due on Friday, and I think we've received virtually all of them, and we, that will start the process of review, and we'll be coming back before the board with a recommended budget by the end of June. We will probably be having a budget meeting or workshop before then. One of the issues that is obviously going to be significant was brought up by Supervisor Finnegan, and that's AB 109 and the impact it has on jails. There, it's, there was no transition period for AB 109. It was enacted, and counties had to deal with it. We will be seeing that financial impact again this year, and we'll be trying to figure out how we're going to fund what's required and continue to, with the services at the level that they are at this point. Had a personnel hearing, also attended the Masonic Lodge groundbreaking, and as just mentioned, we've been spending a considerable amount of time talking with the Department of Finance and our advocates regarding AB 109, and trying to establish a funding base for Delmar County, as well as deal with a growth fund that was also out there, and that's to some levels of success, and some levels, they weren't as successful. We felt that the funding that was recommended to the Department of Finance was extremely low for Delmar County, and will be continuing to advocate for the county and try to get that increased. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we're going to go to public comment, which is a timed item, that was at 10:25. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and if you can, identify yourself when you come up to the microphone also. Mr. Miles.
Well, I'm up here today with a quiver of arrows and a slingshot and a spear.
And a cell phone.
Well, yeah, that went off. And I can't figure who called, so I'm not calling them back. I'm really disappointed in something. I received something in the mail, and I believe a survey by Humble State is very important to this community. When I read the cover letter and realized that my county is part of that party besides my healthcare district, I believe the Wellness Center does an excellent job and is a true partner in this community. I'd like to point something out, and I'm going to start with a remark Mr. Gitlin made at the last Board of Supervisors meeting about the area on the side of Walmart. He mentioned the number of syringes found in that area. Let me point something out. The homeless that live all over Delmar County have health problems just like everybody else. Unfortunately, it may be I'm half joking this, with this, many of them do not have general delivery at our post office. So, guess what, people? As long as they're out of mind, out of sight, they don't have the same rights as we do. They have healthcare needs just like anybody else. It saddens me that one department in this county is not making a good faith effort for outreach. And let me tell you why I want to say this. It's common knowledge that there's a drug problem among our homeless. It's obvious with the syringes that Mr. Gitlin. Syringes that are shared can cause hepatitis C. They can cause AIDS in a community, because shared needles and sex can lead to AIDS.
Richard, you're going to need to wrap it up.
Well, this is how I'm going to wrap it up. I want to suggest that Gary Blacknick, where there's a county park, worked with Ed Foley to put up a mailbox. So, the homeless can answer that survey that the rest of us were given the right to answer.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Ms. Westfall?
Donna Westfall, I live in the city. Cities that have dealt with the Prop 218 protest vote share their experiences and what it takes to successfully protest the next doubling or tripling of the sewer rates. We know that our city is going to say that maintenance costs exceeded all prior estimates instead of design or contractor error, or fraud, or corruption. Some of you are probably thinking that five dollars and thirty-eight cents sewer rate increase that goes into effect on May 1st is no big deal, except when you're seventy or eighty years old on a fixed income. That's not the biggest problem. I'm very much for growth and development. I'm here to say that sixty percent of the users live in the county, and you supervisors have no say in the matter. Here are just four facts and indisputable evidence. In '07, Jim Barnes stated the two-and-a-half million dollar lab would pay for itself in two-and-a-half years. Not true. In '09, I disclosed the falsifying of payroll by the electrical contractor whose hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar penalty would have been paid to the city if the city had a working labor compliance program. Stover Engineering was paid thousands for overseeing the nonexistent labor compliance program. In 2012, the Water Quality Board signed a settlement agreement concerning sixty-two violations that carried a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand mandatory minimum penalty. While I questioned numerous items and what looked like, excuse me, apparent fraud and corruption on the sewer upgrade, my fellow council members ignored what I had to say and refused to investigate. Now, everything I predicted and questioned is coming true, because now I have reliable sources that want to blow the lid off the corruption on the sewer plant. The reason I'm here is to suggest to the county to immediately prepare a temporary injunction and declaratory relief to stop the sewer rate increase from going into effect on May 1st due to the following, and here's a short list. A hundred thousand paid to by Walland for Front Street Park rehab was in the contract, never paid to the city or done by Walland. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fence contracted for, they changed the design and plans by Walland. A two-hundred thousand dollar fence was put up, city was charged around half a million. Seismic footings for foundation, supposed to be so deep, but they didn't put them deep enough, and that was a six-hundred thousand dollar savings the city didn't see. More importantly, it means that the buildings are not structurally sound. The thing is, I predicted this. I questioned them whether or not the city was getting what they were paying for. It's on the public record, and it's on video. I didn't have the proof in my hands back then. I didn't have the proof in my hands back then, but now, six years later, it's a different story. So all in all, we're talking about up to $15 million.
Donna, you're going to need to wrap it up.
Improperly built and paid for by the city. Much of that money was pocketed illegally. I'm suggesting we do something to stop the malfeasance by the city council. Here are the costs associated with filing a temporary injunction. $435 filing fee, $60 to file a motion, $200 for a bond. I'd like this made a part of the public record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Jody Hoon, I'm the Program Director for Harrington House, our local domestic violence shelter, and I just want to come in and compliment the Board of Supervisors for their attention to AB 109 and the realignment. It is a safety concern in the DV field, and I know the far north region of California has some concerns. And our community, for the most part, really works well together with the realignment with its challenges. We've done a good job trying to find solutions and continuing to, so thank you.
Thanks, Jody. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no public, I am going to close public comment. And Mr. Bernard, I know you're here for item number 11, and as we talked about, I don't know if you want to mention something briefly because I pulled it from the agenda to have that public meeting that we took. Okay, excellent. Okay, thank you. At this point, we have another timed item that was on. We haven't done the consent agenda yet. Actually, Mr. Daniels, if you're okay, wait just a minute. We'll go ahead and pass consent agenda minus the item that was pulled for discussion. I'll entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second, and that is minus number 11 and minus number 13.
Chair Sullivan, there was a typo in Ford.
Yeah, we'll get that. Yeah, that was noted. We'll get that corrected. Any public comment on items on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing no comments, I'll close that and bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number 12, conflict of interest.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, and in that consent agenda, we had a couple resolutions, and Supervisor McClure has got the first one regarding sexual assault awareness and child abuse prevention month, which is number two on the agenda as requested by the North Coast Rape Crisis Team.
Is there someone from North Coast here? Oh, good. Okay, this is the proclamation, the Board of Supervisors, County of Delmar, State of California, proclamation proclaiming April as the day of sexual assault awareness and child abuse prevention month. Whereas sexualized violence affects children, youth, adults, and elders of all genders from all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds with public health and social justice implications for every person in Delmar County. And whereas it is estimated that one in three girls and one in seven boys will be sexually victimized by the age of 18. And whereas staff and volunteers of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team provide 24-hour service to survivors and their significant others to support those impacted, improve response, and ensure that the survivors are not revictimised. And whereas the Delmar County Rape Crisis Team provides prevention education and awareness raising programs throughout Delmar and Humboldt Counties, it encourages every person to participate in ending sexualized violence. And whereas no one person, organization, or community can eliminate sexualized violence on their own, but can through collaboration and partnership work together towards a social justice for all. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Delmar County Board of Supervisors that April 2013 is Sexual Assault Awareness and Child Abuse Prevention Month in Delmar County. The Board of Supervisors reaffirms its commitment to the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and its vision, a world without violence, passed and adopted unanimously this 23rd day of April 13.
I want to start by thanking all of you for your ongoing support of the North Coast Rape Crisis Team and for proclaiming April as Sexual Assault and Child Abuse Awareness Month. It takes an entire community to end violence, and as leaders, you set the tone for others. My name is Esther, and I am an advocate and prevention educator with North Coast Rape Crisis Team. North Coast Rape Crisis Team has been in existence for 39 years, with an office here in Creston City since 1988. We serve people of all ages and genders who have been directly or indirectly affected by any form of sexualized violence, regardless of when the trauma occurred. We may hear from someone who has been raped today, or we may hear from someone who has been harmed decades ago and is just now reaching for support. Because sexual abuse often happens in the context of child abuse, we provide services to children and their families and work towards the prevention of all forms of child malt treatment. Because it happens in the context of domestic violence, we work with local allies towards ending all forms of intimate partner abuse and violence, providing services to those who have experienced violence. In addition to our wide range of free and confidential intervention services, we provide primary prevention programs to children as young as preschool throughout elementary, junior, and senior high, as well as college and other adult programs, including trainings for professionals that provide services to families. Proclaiming April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month is important because one in three women, one in 11 men, one in four girls, and one in six boys will experience some form of sexual abuse. Because it takes an entire community to address and end violence, raising awareness about the issue is essential. During April, as you will see the poster you received, there are a number of events, and we would like to highlight a few of them. Tomorrow, April 24th, is International Jeans for Justice Day, which is a day to wear jeans to show your support of all survivors and to break the myths which continue to blame and revictimise those who have been harmed. You have in your packet a sticker and information. We hope that you will join us in observing the day. Also, there will be a clothesline workshop at College of the Redwoods on April 25th from 11:30 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in Room 29. The workshop is open to people who identify as women that have experienced violence, know of a loved one who has experienced violence, or have lost a loved one to violence. This is a medium where survivors and loved ones can express their feelings by making a T-shirt. We hang the T-shirt throughout the community so that their voices can be heard. Thank you again for your commitment to work with North Coast Rape Crisis Team and our vision, a world without violence.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go on to item number three, adopt proclamation proclaiming April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month in Delmar County as requested by the Redwood Coast Regional Center. Do we have a member from the Redwood Coast Regional Center here?
Yes.
Excellent. And Supervisor Gitlin's got the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair Sullivan, with pleasure. Well, proclaiming April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month, whereas autism spectrum disorders, known as the acronym ASD, are lifelong conditions which represent medical, psychological, behavioral, and educational challenges that typically require interventions and services, and whereas autism spectrum disorders are now more prevalent than type 1 diabetes, Down Syndrome, or childhood cancer, and whereas approximately 1.5 million Americans live with an autism spectrum disorder, and whereas approximately 1% of American children between birth and 17 years of age have an autism spectrum disorder, and whereas autism spectrum disorders are the fastest growing developmental disability in California, and whereas over 59,500 people in California receive services from the Department of Developmental Services for Autism Spectrum Disorders, and whereas over 43 people in Delmar County receive services through Redwood Coast Regional Center for Autism Spectrum Disorders, be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar hereby proclaim April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month, passed and adopted this 23rd day of April 2013.
Hello, thank you. My name is Karen Saturn. I manage the local office of Redwood Coast Regional Center, a nonprofit agency funded through the state of California to provide services for people with developmental disabilities. And I'd just like to read a short statement from our Autism Spectrum Disorder Program Coordinator, Sheila Keys. Autism is not a tragedy, but ignorance is. Autism awareness increases early identification and intervention, which can greatly improve the outcome for people with autism. Autism awareness reminds us that a little tolerance goes a long way. For example, a child having a meltdown may just be his way of dealing with stress and have nothing to do with being naughty. Autism awareness challenges us to commit to work together to find ways to ensure that everyone, including people with autism, can access education, healthcare, employment, and opportunities to contribute to the community. People with autism, their friends and family in Redwood Coast Regional Center and our community partners, thank you very much for proclaiming April 2013 as Autism Awareness Month in Delmar County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, we are going to go to our timed item, which is a roads department presentation. No, we're going to discuss it after our timed items that we have coming up. We're past the hour on that. Mr. Daniels.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing the road division to give this presentation. Okay, so basically, this is kind of a report from 2012. We started out with some culvert replacements. We're way behind on some of our culverts, but we are starting that process. I guess that's correct where it's at. After last March, we had some pretty substantial rains. Ocean View Drive was one of the places that exposed one of the water mains from the Community Service District. And just to show you an example, it sunk. You know, we kind of tried to temporarily fix it, and we did till the water was gone, and then we could go in and replace that with a new culvert, working with the Community Water Service District. This was north end of Parkway Drive. Same thing. Well, this one here has been dilapidated for quite some time, but we noticed the sink in the road after those heavy rains, and so forced us to actually spend some money and some time to do this. This was a difficult project. It bordered up against the state park property, so we had to work with them to make sure that we didn't go too far into the state park property where it would have been a little more difficult. So anyway, it worked out good. A little expensive, but two roads within the county that a lot of people use, so they're very vital to the community. Chip seal. We had chip seal projects in a whole bunch of different locations, which was kind of a task last year, and some of them were a double chip seal, and some of them were just a single chip seal, which is standard as a single chip seal. Just a picture of the crew. The machine goes down the road, the truck gets pulled backward, so it's a little bit difficult. Although it's kind of, it's a fun project. The guys really enjoy doing it. You're actually seeing something get done, and that's something nice to see from the crew and the enthusiasm that comes with that. Now, this just happens to be up on Sierra Wood in Gasky. The wind blew so hard in Gasky, you guys have been in Gasky. The day we went to do this project, there was more limbs and leaves on the roads, so we had to sweep the road totally before we could even start spraying the oil on the road. But kind of one of those freaks of nature that happen when it's nice. This is over off of Grand. Grand was one of the roads that was a double chip seal. We felt the need to do a double chip seal because the road was starting to show some little bit more fatigue than some of the other roads, so here we go once again. Got a person just standing there watching, but I'm sure he's busy doing something. We get accused of that a lot, but that's not true. Usually, when we're stopped, it's because we're letting traffic go by sometimes. That's why that always comes up. But anyway, we can joke about it with people. Here we go, once again, the oil sprayed on the road. I don't know if you guys have ever seen a chip seal project. The oil is sprayed down, and then we come over with just a thin layer of rock. And basically, it's kind of like painting your house. If you don't paint your house, eventually, you're going to end up replacing the siding, which is very costly. Same with the road, but those costs are a lot more than re-siding your house. Cost on the chip seal project, the double chip seals, Grand, Alpine, Sierra, and Sandmine, Freeman Lipowitz, Leela, kind of run down the list. That's what it cost to do those projects. At the bottom there was total, and that's pretty reasonable. And we found a good oil that works real well for this area, and it's taken quite some time. I'm really pleased with it. It holds, it sticks. It doesn't matter if the rock is a little bit on the dirtier side. So working with the oil company, it worked out pretty good. They actually let us use an oil the previous year at the cost of the cheaper oil, so I was liking that. Crosswalk, we had to retrofit a couple of crosswalks. Pine Grove School at the North Crest, and then out of Redwood School on Lakeral Drive. They were a little expensive to replace, but we got them done, and they're working nicely, especially around them school areas. It's real sensitive, so we also have a couple more going this year. Slides and tree removal. You know, that's just one of them things living in Delmar County. We have a lot of trees, we get a lot of water, so you get a lot of slides with trees. This just happened to be on the mouth of the Klamath River Road. Ran into a couple. We had to close the road for a while. Had to try to put some silt fence around it, but you know, mother nature's going to do what it wants to do. So we worked with the Uroch tribe in order to find a place to put this material. And they, incidentally, got a grant to rehab the site and got that road paved all the way down to their facility down at the end. South Fork Road. Lot of money spent on South Fork Road with federal highways, which is great. Some of those really bad spots have not produced the amount of material or anything, actually. So it's been really good. This was just one particular slide that we had back last March. March must be the month for slides and tree removal, that's for sure, because we've had a lot this year also. We always have a spotter, the one guy on the side there, just safety concerns. They always have a spotter with an air horn. You know, you try to do your best safety management practices you can, so when you're looking up a slope that's virtually straight up and down, you try to do your best. And sometimes, the best thing is to just close the road. Now, this particular picture, this presentation was put together before we had another slide at this particular site just recently. We're still working on it. The road is currently closed during work hours and open after work hours. And on the weekends, it's open. But the Patters Creek Road, we've had a significant slide up there. But the Patrous Creek Road, we've had a significant slide up there. Once again, you know, without these Forest Service access roads is what I call them, they're county roads, but without this road, you don't access the Forest Service properties. And, you know, I tend to look at it, that is the road that's maintained by the county, but the rocks that are on the road come from the Forest Service. So, I'm currently working with them on a place to put some of this material. And it's good that we work together. I have a good working relationship with them for places to put material that come from their property. Other large tree on the South Fork Road. Sometimes these can be a bit precarious, but, you know, just showing you some of the hazards that are out there, and it's just what the guys do every day. Striping. We purchased a striper, and the first time the county's ever had a striper. So, it's been kind of a learning curve for us, but we have the ability to do our own striping when it's convenient, when the weather's conducive, that's for sure. Typically, we would get a contractor, throw the bids out there, and get a contractor to come in, and then he would get here, and then the fog would be in for three or four days, it'd be drizzly, and they'd just be sitting here. So, this actually allows us to go out and stripe roads when it's convenient, when the weather's like today and yesterday. I mean, you don't ask for too many more days that's like that, so. And this is something we purchased last year, and it's been working out real good. Like I said, there's a little bit of a learning curve to it, but you know what? It's just like anything else. We'll get it down, and they'll perfect it. It's got some good guys that are working on it, and they have taken pride in what they're And it simply mounts in the back of the pickup. Does the whole glass beads, so we're in compliance with the MUTCD, so I think it's a really good thing. Saves a lot of money compared to what it was costing us to have a contractor come in and do it. And most of all, we can do it at our own time, when it's convenient for us. Either a restripe or newly resurfaced roads. And, of course, there's the infamous island up front of Walmart, so, which we worked with Walmart contractors, and we got that thing looking pretty nice, so the public's happy with it now. Paving project last year was railroad. I don't really have a whole lot of pictures for it, and the cost was $260,000. We did a little shoulder enhancing on that road, made it safer for the public, and I've gotten a ton of compliments on it being a little wider for the people to walk in that area, which is important. Before, there was no shoulder at all, so that was a good project. Paving, that's the crew paving, so this particular gentleman, he's pretty happy about running the paver, so. I had to throw that in there, you know. Trash cleanup. We do a lot of trash cleanup within the county, and this just happens to be, this picture was down on the Roddy Creek, where we do have a gravel extraction site down there, and somebody chose to live down there, and we had to go clean up all of the remains from what they were living in. So, with the three and a half tons of trash throughout the county, it could be couches, mattresses, I mean, refrigerators, you name it. We do pick up a lot of trash that's left alongside the road, and it's become more apparent in the last five or eight years. It's more often that we pick up trash, so. This is just a little clip of a slide that we had this year, and I kind of wanted to show it to you, and after that, if you have any questions, that'd be great. They just happened to get this on video. Large rock, you can kind of see it there. And they know it's coming, and we'd been watching it for a good week. And then, telltale signs of something like that's going to happen. And I'm glad the audio's not going, so. And then here comes the rock, so that's...
Wow, that is huge.
And I might add, how impressive that is, you know, and to keep the crew away, and the guys are...
Who's filming?
I'm not sure, but none of those two guys. But, anyway, do I have to give names?
No, I'm just curious, because they got pretty good work on that.
I think it's just a phone, and, you know, I had the opportunity to take Jim Barnes and Tina up to the slide up Patrous Creek, just to show them, hey, this is what we got going on. And while we were there, the biggest rock that I've ever seen come down from about 400 feet, and I turned the vehicle and went back down the creek while their heads turned and got to watch this massive rock take out trees. And, of course, it's really loud, so, you know, it just happened to be that they were with me, you know, to witness this, and it just, I think they have a different perspective on what goes on out there while our road crews are out doing their work, you know. So, safety is the biggest issue for us, and we work at it pretty hard, so. Do you have any questions?
You want to mention off some of the projects you've got coming up?
Oh, yeah, the rack projects. We do have some projects, not a whole lot of funding out there available. We were able to get some rack funds for some bridge approach projects. The old Gasky Toll Road around the Three Ponds area, there's going to be a pretty significant pave going down into that from the Patrous Creek side, and then a little bit up on the, up by the Three Ponds and the Holiday Mine Road. Low Divide is Major Moore. The Major Moore project is basically a couple hundred feet up from the north fork of the Smith River. That's a bridge approach pave also. Oregon Mountain Road is going to be, there's a 30-inch culvert there now. It's been identified as, it could be a potential sediment delivery if it failed, and it did fail. We just caught it in time, but that project's probably going to take about six weeks. We're going to put an eight-foot culvert in there, so that'll be later on in the summer. Chip seal projects on the Patrous Creek Road, and that's a triple chip seal. I don't know what we're going to do in the area where the big slide is right now, because there's really not much of road surface left there now. So, and then on the Low Divide, we have, of course, we have some of the Title III funds, I believe it was, that we did the fire prevention stuff. It's going very well. If you guys are up in that area, I have a crew that's been working on that, and it absolutely looks like a park, and the Forest Service is pleased with it, so that's, glad to see that.
Okay. Any questions from supervisors?
Supervisor Galen. Jeff, great report. Thank you. Tell us about your funding. Where do you derive your funds to do the job you do, which is a great job? And are you, do you have enough funds?
Well, we get funds from the highway users' tax, and there's a few different pots that we get from them, without looking at it in front of me, somewhere between $750,000 and Those have been dwindling, so I think we're down to like $650,000. You know, those are ballpark figures, not exact, so not a whole lot of money compared to what it used to be.
You're doing well with it. You're doing well with it. The other follow-up question I had is, I think our last meeting, we made an announcement that there were some shelters that were going to be put up, bus stop shelters. We, I guess we fell into a little bit of a gold mine, and Caltrans was going to distribute additional shelters, some of which were in the county, at no cost. And I think Roads Department's going to put them in, but those costs for your costs would be reimbursable. Do you have anything to tell us about that? Was there an update, or have they got the equipment in order?
Actually, I've been on phone conversation with Mark Wall, and spoke with Eric Weir with the city, and we're teaming up to get those installed in the proper locations within the county.
Thank you. Any other supervisors?
Comments?
Good job.
Good job. Jeff, you guys do a great job. I know everyone is affected by our roads. They just don't realize it on a daily basis, and there is a process on roads that, I know you guys use the pavement management index. We do a report every couple of years that says what shape the road is in from zero to 100, and I think under 50, it begins to be prioritized. So, as much as we'd like to do it throughout the whole county, there is a limited amount of funds, and that's kind of shrinking up. But you guys also, you know, the emergency response, you guys have had to deal with the huge rains we had last year. You guys did a great job with that, and there are, well, as much water as we get, that was a ton of water. So, anyway, we appreciate the work you guys do.
You know, I just want to say a special thanks to the crew itself that does the work for us. You know, hats off to them. They're the ones that do the work, and I think they're the ones that need the compliment.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. We're going to take a three-minute break, and then we're going to have our social services presentation. To our 10:45 timed presentation, Department of Health and Human Services Presentation Director Blatnik.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, and you'll be meeting some of the staff, if you don't know them, today as well, some of the supervisory and management staff. I have here our Assistant Director, Dorothy Provincio. I want to make sure that you knew her. She's very involved with the overall administration of the program, as am I. Essentially, our department provides services to people. We feel ourselves to be somewhat grateful for having that opportunity, and the services that we provide are essentially mandated services by the federal and state government, and we provide those to probably many people that you know, or that the people that are viewing this presentation know. We have neighbors, friends, family. Anyone at some point in their life may need one of our services, and we're here to help if they meet the eligibility requirements. The integrated agency model is something, in fact, that the Board of Supervisors has endorsed a number of years ago, and has really been on sort of the cutting edge of how to provide public services at the local level. There's a number of counties that are now adopting this method of providing services. Most recently, just a couple of months ago, Siskiyou County is now a combined or consolidated department. There are much greater efficiencies, especially at the administrative level. Also, the various programs or branches can work together, support each other, in providing the best possible services most efficiently. So, that's how you can see, we're all connected, we're all working under the same mission and vision statement, as you saw earlier. Some of our strategic initiatives this year, and these move from year to year as we accomplish them. Supervisor Gitlin mentioned about our alcohol and other drug programs offices. We wish to move those, and you'll be considering that in the not-too-distant future. Another sort of exciting opportunity has to do with our KDA settlement. There was a lawsuit in Southern California, Los Angeles, regarding certain children in the child welfare system who were not given the kinds of opportunities that the courts felt they should be given regarding wraparound and other types of services. So, now we have a new mandate, we have some funding, probably not enough to provide the mandate, but we're still excited nonetheless, because we think that the services that will be available, there'll be evidence-based services, we think that some of our children and families will be better served. We're pretty excited about that. As far as partnerships, you can see that, as I go through this, that we believe in partnership. We know that no one individual, no one department can get a big job done, and so we really rely on our partners. We work together. We serve on various coalitions, committees, collaboratives, and boards, all for the purpose of promoting our mission and vision for the community and for Health and Human Services. I wanted to just acknowledge for a minute, especially because David's here, our current President of CSAC, how important CSAC is to our department, that they have really been our advocates. There has been a big shift, as you know, in the state moving services and responsibilities and fiscal risk to the counties. There's been funding. It's been adequate in the Health and Human Services side. We'll see over time if it remains adequate. A lot of it depends on the economy and growth. But we know that our advocates were there, and this was a long process. The governor made sure to sit down with CSAC and create the best possible realignment plan that they could. And on the Health and Human Services side, we're quite pleased with the outcome. But again, we'll see over time if I say that a year or two from now, but so far, so good. We have, as you can see, many of you may sit on some of these boards, commissions, and committees that we work together outside of this boardroom, and we're all involved in something that has to do with our community. Some of us attend meetings outside the county as well that supports our work. We have a lot of great partners, and we certainly want to acknowledge that we would not have the successes that we do were not for working with our partners. And we're always seeking new partnerships and new opportunities. And we're always seeking new partnerships and new opportunities. Today, you'll be hearing specifically from our Alcohol and Other Drug Programs about our Mental Health Branch and about our Public Assistance, Employment, and Training Branch at a future board meeting. Then we'll cover Public Health, Social Services, and the Administrative Fiscal Branch. So to present, and this is a way for you to sort of meet some of our folks, for you, I'd like to have Teresa Schaefer. And Teresa is our Supervisor for our Substance Abuse Services, and she'll go through the Alcohol and Other Drug Programs. There you go.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Teresa Schaefer from Alcohol and Other Drug Programs. I'm the Supervisor there. I've been there for 17 years. Currently, our Program Coordinator, Jill Fullington, manages the place. We have a total of six employees, four counselors, and two support staff. Referrals come from our Probation Department, Child Welfare Services, and also other community referrals come in, as well as self-referrals. Right now, we have 90 active clients. We're governed by many laws, federal, state, local laws regarding outpatient services for clients in this area. For alcohol and other drugs, one of the most stringent is the HIPAA Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, as well as federal regulations regarding the confidentiality of client records. We're currently in the process of implementing electronic medical records. That should be in running around July. And our program tries to use evidence-based materials in offering these services. Some of those are the 12 Steps of Alcoholics Anonymous where we're oriented towards that. We use a matrix program, which is methamphetamine. It's geared towards methamphetamine and addicts, stimuli the addicts, as well as motivational interviewing. We try to meet clients where they're at. And we're now presenting trauma-informed services for women and girls who are domestic violence, childhood abuse, instances like that. And we're trying to put into place some trauma-informed services for Vietnam vets. I'm not Vietnam veterans. Some of our services are... We do adolescent services for the most significant adolescents with most significant drug and alcohol problems. We try to keep it geared towards that. It's more similar to our adults in the program. We have dual disorders services for individuals with alcohol and other drug problems, as well as mental health, with alcohol and drug problems being the most significant. We do intensive outpatient treatment. One of those is a perinatal program, another one is intensive day treatment, as well as after-care programs. We also are... We contract for services with residential treatment services and sober living environments for our clients. That first step, perinatal program, is a program Ms. Fullington and I have been doing for the last 17 years. And our women, the legislators back in the 80s decided that that program should be funded because there was a lot of babies being born with positive for drugs. And so they put money towards the treatment of young women in their childbearing years. So that program is one we've been doing. It's a very successful program. Just recently, we had a graduation and those women, many of them are having children transition back into their homes. A few of them are starting school at College of the Redwoods. Some of them are getting their high school diploma through our adult ed program. And so overall, it's been very successful over the past 17 years. And currently, there are 19 women in our services with a total of 54 children that receive our services. Our completion rate is comparable to that in the state with a completion rate of 80%. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll be presenting the Mental Health Branch Services. And I just wanted to acknowledge Celia Perez is here, and she's our Interim Clinical Services Manager. And we also have Karina Crowell. She's our Supervisor for Arch Team. We'll talk about those services in a minute. And Jeff Uger's here from the... He's our Supervisor over at the Service Center. Have I left out any other mental health folks? Okay, great. Mental health has always been a challenging service to provide. There's never been enough resources for the need. With the Mental Health Services Act, there's certainly been some improvements, but it's still one of the woefully underfunded programs. It's essentially a Medi-Cal program. We provide services to Medi-Cal recipients only, or those that are very, very low income. We have a great deal of mandates and requirements associated with our Medi-Cal program. And we provide services to both adults and youth. The referrals come from all over the county, a lot of self-referrals. People can walk in between 8:00 and 5:00, sit down in the lobby, and see someone within a very short period of time, whether they're adults or children. Children can also go directly and their families to the RIMI Vista program, which is our organizational provider that we pay for each year. We are delighted to have the Mental Health Services Act. It's really been a major assistance in our work. It's geared specifically for those with serious and persistent mental illness, but it's been a vital program. State realignment is not new to the mental health system. We realigned in 1991. However, there was an expansion of that realignment in 2011. And we, with those realignment expansions, come additional responsibilities and fiscal risk. You become more responsible for the fiscal costs of providing services. In terms of the service models, I wanted to emphasize our team model. I hope you have a sense that we really are teams that are working together. That's why I'm not here alone. This is not about one individual. This is really about teams of individuals that work together. And really, and especially in our mental health system, but also true in a lot of our work, we partner with our consumers, with our clients. It's really a partnership. If individuals want to improve their lives, we're there to support that. If they don't, well, that's their choice. We cannot mandate services other than hospitalizations for individuals in our mental health system. But the Bridge Team is also led by Celia Perez, and that's our access team. So if you want mental health services, Celia's team will be interviewing you and determining your eligibility. Also, the Bridge Team handles all of the crisis intervention work 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They are busy. They spend a good deal of their time at the emergency room. That's where they provide their evening and weekend services. The mental health system has sort of gone through its own reforms, and one of those has to do with including recovery and all the lessons learned through the alcohol and other drug programs models and applying that to mental health. So now we talk about a lot of our mental health folks who are in recovery. They're just recovering from a mental health disorder. And so we have really been promoting that work. And that really, again, speaks to partnerships, partnership with the individual that wants to help themselves or the family. You're familiar with most of these services. They're not, and particularly outside of normal sort of traditional services, the therapeutic behavioral service is quite unique in that for certain children, we can provide up to 24 hours a day, seven days a week, support services. They have to have some extreme behavior disorders, and our contract provider, RIMI Vista, provides those services. As you can see, we do provide services both at the jail and juvenile hall. I wanted to highlight the Service Center. We have a lot of great work that's going on, but I wanted to highlight it because I think it's so unique. And Jeff and the staff there, along with our consumers, have put together a great program. And I really say along with our consumers. The consumers are, they have their own counsel. They provide advice and guidance as far as what kinds of services they would like to see at the Service Center. If you walk into that Service Center, it feels comfortable, it feels inviting, you're welcomed. People want to include you in what they're providing. Sometimes our consumers will actually assist in the provision of services. We have actually been able to hire up to six community workers who work on a part-time basis, who were either consumers of services or they had a family member who was. And that has been a tremendous addition to our work, one that we really value and we want to expand. I think you'll see more of that in our next year's budget. Because of all the work at mental health, all of the great work by the teams of our county staff, as well as the dedication of our consumers in improving their own lives, we have been able, over the last five years, which is roughly the time that consolidation with mental health with the rest of our department occurred, that we have been able to reduce, or I should say, the consumers have been able to reduce their reliance on institutional care. The acute care, which is hospitalizations, what most of you know as the 5150s, have been able to be reduced by 57%. That's very significant. And long-term care, which generally means a person's going to be in a long-term facility, a locked long-term facility for at least a year, and we've been able to reduce that now by 49%. Those are really significant positive outcomes for our consumers. Next, I would like to have Carmen Fang Chavez. She's our Public Assistance, Employment, and Training Branch Program Manager. And Carmen knows this work backward and forward. She's been doing it for many years, and she will sort of tell you what's going on over there. That's our largest branch in our department.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have seven units, a total of seven units in our branch, and I'd like to introduce the Supervisors. I have Rick Williams, Employment Services, Kathy Straight, Eligibility, Misty Mallory, Eligibility, Dossie Woodrow, Eligibility, Gil Chadwick, Reception, Victor Poe, Eligibility, Wallace Austin, Eligibility, and Dorothy Wadlow. She's our Staff Services Analyst. As you can see, we serve over 11,000 children and adults. They do all the work. Our programs are highly regulated. We must abide and comply with these rules and laws. Our state audits are conducted on all programs. Some are random throughout the year, some are annually, some are two years to three years. First practice listed is C4 Yourself. It's an online application system where the public can apply for benefits, where there's access to a computer with Internet. It's user-friendly and it's a secure site. So far, since August of 2010, when we went live, we've had about 560 applications come through this system, which interfaces with C4. It's our electronic case management system. Linkages is Child Welfare and Public Assistance Coordinated Services to serve families with barriers to self-sufficiency. You can see 53.6 million benefits issued annually. The programs are listed, are highlighted with an asterisk by...
Carmen, those are local numbers?
Pardon me?
That's local numbers?
This is local numbers.
Okay.
Yes. 35 million are estimated to be Medi-Cal expenditures alone, out of those 53 million. Yes, and we expect about a 20% increase with healthcare reform on individuals eligible for medical services, which is from 8,000 to 10,000. CalWorks is temporary assistance to needy families. It's a four-year time limit program. The Independent Living Program serves youth who are, whose parents are participating in CalWorks. And it's, our goal is to engage teens to attain education and skills necessary to become self-sufficient adults. The CalWorks Welfare to Work Program is designed to assist recipients obtain or prepare for employment. We have our Employment and Training Unit located at the Workforce Center, along with Workforce Investment Act and State Department of Rehabilitation staff. A total of 15 staff there. They all provide comprehensive services for job seekers. The employer outreach, we outreach to local employers to discuss employment-related needs so we can better train our clients to fit business needs for our community. Job Finders is a three-week workshop to assist clients gain skills for interview, job search, resume writing. It's open to the public at the Workforce Center. We have funding to help pay for work, clothing, school supplies, books, childcare, in order for our clients to meet their welfare-to-work plan. Our clients volunteer at local employers as a work experience to gain employment-related On the bottom of this slide, I'm showing you how Delmore ranks in welfare-to-work participation rate out of 58 counties in the state. Last week, we had an event at the Workforce Center. It was the Youth and Young Adult Job Social. Had great attendance, about 106 job seekers showed up, and 83 out of that 106 were under 20 years old. So we're very pleased with that. CalFresh is a program that helps low-income individuals and families buy food they need for good health. It's meant to supplement the household's income. A family of three can earn up to $9,200 per year and still get full benefits. There are some restrictions, though, on purchases, no alcoholic beverages, tobacco, pet food, paper products. The number you see, $9.4 million, is for food purchase at most grocery stores and farmers' markets. We're currently doing lots of education for CalWorks clients over preparing healthy food with the limited amount of assistance they get. In the last three years, Delmore has ranked number one for CalFresh utilization, and I'm sharing a copy of our awards for 2011, 2012, and 2013. Thank you.
Well, so if you'd like, we're certainly open to questions and comments. We know that's a lot of material, and we understand that we probably can't answer all your questions in one sitting, but we'll do our best and certainly we can provide follow-up information later. I know some of you are more familiar with our programs than others. Okay. So any questions or comments from Supervisors? Supervisor Hemmings?
I just have a comment, Gary. I'd really like to commend you and your staff. I think you not only fulfill the mandated needs, but I think you go above and beyond. I think the partnerships, not only the partnerships... I think the partnerships, not only the partnerships throughout the community, but the partnerships within your own organization, I think are just outstanding.
Okay. Supervisor Finnegan?
Yeah, I just want to ditto what Supervisor Hemmingson had to say, Gary. You do a marvelous job. I think the thing that slides by the community is they think of handouts. They don't understand the partnerships, they don't understand the positive benefits, and they certainly don't understand the $53 million that actually comes into or travels through the county stores and businesses. So it, job well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Supervisor?
Supervisor McClure? I will just agree that I think that your staff and everyone does a wonderful job and it's a really tough job. And in your next section, you're going to have some tough job that people do. I know you probably don't get kudos enough, but maybe Gary should buy everyone a salad today or something. I don't know.
Thank you, Supervisor.
But thank you. Everybody gets an apple. Thank you for your good work.
Thank you.
Road Department gets donuts, they get salads.
That's right, that's right.
Supervisor Gillan?
Okay. Yeah, Gary, I want to reiterate what the other board members have said. You got, your department does a great job. I think it's just, it's a controversial issue. I do find it staggering that 148 bucks a month does not buy a lot of groceries. So I think when you see the actual statistics, it is a reality check as to, you know, you just get these images in the paper of, you know, someone using it to go buy a bottle of booze and obviously that's restricted, so you can't do that. So I was, I am, it's staggering how much money goes in that direction, though. 53 million is a lot of money in Del Norte County, so. But we appreciate the work your departments do and as Gary said, he's going to have a second presentation at a following meeting to, because the department is the biggest department in the county and it's too many subjects, too many sub-departments within that to do in one presentation. So we do appreciate you showing up and waiting for your timed item, which we kind of rolled past a little bit, so.
No problem.
And that, thank you, thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for coming. Okay, we had another timed item, which was introduction of new EFNEP employee and 4H update. Is Dorina Espinoza here? Yes. We'll give you just a second here for, you've got some folks to clear out here, so.
Yeah, maybe you could put six or eight other presentations on next to the one.
Okay. Sorry, were you two talking? I completely missed it, so, welcome.
I think I still have five minutes to say good morning.
Morning.
My name is Dorina Espinoza. I'm the advisor for the, I'm the Youth Families and Communities Advisor and I supervise a 4H program here in Del Norte County, as well as Humboldt, Mendocino, Lake Counties. And I supervise the EFNEP, we call it, instead of EFNEP, we call it EFNEP, which is the Expanded Food and Nutrition Education Program here in Del Norte and Humboldt County. And I wanted to thank you all for your support of Cooperative Extension, both of these programs, and I am employed by Cooperative Extension. They are both programs of Cooperative Extension. And your support, both in infrastructure and the facility that we have here in town, as well as staff. And I'm going to give you just a brief update of 4H here. Are any of you 4Hers, were 4Hers in your? And so, as you know, 4H is really a program that many people think of 4H as a program that is about animals, small or large animals, or maybe the project is robotics, or maybe the project is a surfing camp that we collaborated with Southern Oregon to have a surf camp here last summer in Crescent City. But all of these projects and all the activities that we do are a means to an end and our end is to help develop youth into future leaders, to help develop youth into conscientious and contributing members of their communities, however we define community, whether that's political borders or faith-based borders, based borders, or family. However we define community, what we're interested in is providing a means to develop youth into positive contributors in the future, presently and in the future. And we provide a lot of means for youth to engage in leadership opportunities with the structure that 4H provides. And that structure is for 4H members to actually serve with adult supervision as treasurers in clubs or to serve, excuse me, as secretaries in clubs, or to serve as leaders in clubs or in the county-level council, so that youth have opportunities to speak in front of individuals with decision-making power, as well as opportunities to practice and become these future leaders that we have. Thank you, Martha, for becoming what we dream of in 4H, of what becomes of our 4Hers. Here in Del Norte County, the youth that we have currently enrolled is at 82, but we have, for every two youth that we have, we have one adult, so we have approximately 40 adult volunteers. And our program runs on adult volunteers. Without the adult volunteers, we have no 4H program. So we are extremely thankful for all you adult volunteers who are out there watching. We are extremely thankful of the adult volunteers that we have in the program because there is no 4H program without the adults giving beyond their family obligations and their work obligations. And it is a huge commitment that they provide, the community, the youth and the community at large. And so we are very thankful for that support from the adults. As I mentioned, we do have projects that range from animals to robotics to physical activity with surfing. And we also have about eight clubs, but that isn't the only means of 4H in a community. We have clubs, which are traditional, how we think of 4H, but we also have large projects that might look like after-school programs or, for a while, one of my colleagues, Deborah Giraud, was working here in Del Norte County with some of the tribal community members with a grant that she had in trying to introduce college to first-generation tribal community members by actually taking a road trip and going out to colleges in the state of California. So we look different in each community, but what is the same in every community and what makes 4H so strong in the state of California, which is our adult volunteers, and the adult volunteers helping build the leaders of tomorrow, conscientious members of our community that become the leaders of today and tomorrow. So I'll shift now into our nutrition education program and then after our nutrition educator gives a small presentation, we'll be available for questions or comments after that. So as you mentioned, we have our EFNEP, or EFNEP, we like to call it, program. And what makes EFNEP unique in the United States is that we are a free eight-week nutrition education program. Some of, the only things that we can do sometimes in nutrition education program is a single dose of providing information about healthy diet or providing information about recipes in different environments. Maybe that's a grocery store, maybe that's in the schools. And the single dose can be effective over time. So for example, you have Harvest of the Month here in your schools and that's a single dose once a month, but it's sustained over time and over years. And it's an extremely strong program here in Del Norte County. But what we are able to offer is an eight-week program, and you'll get a little bit more about the program from Jessica. But the eight-week program is what makes us unique. And what we do is, well, what Jessica does is, in order to make sure that we have people for all eight weeks, is she will get on the phone and call them up on her way to the lesson, hands, both hands on the steering wheel, and remind them that there's a class that day. So there's a lot of outreach to make sure that the clients, that the community members that we serve are at the sessions that we provide. So the community members that we serve are individuals who are at 185% of the federal poverty level. So we are providing service for some of the folks that receive SNAP Ed, the food stamps, SNAP Ed now. So we are providing service for those individuals, we are providing service for other community members, as well as youth. So it's adults and youth. And here in Del Norte County, as you know, a lot of what used to exist has actually left the county with the Network for Healthy California funds, which are ending in September. So I've been working together with Gary and Deborah Kravitz and others in your community, the individuals that are involved with the building healthy communities here in Del Norte County, to try to understand what did nutrition education look like here in Del Norte County when there was funding with Network for Healthy California? Now that the funding is gone, what can we do, as well as all the other players in the community, what can we do with EFNEP to help support what was here in the county? Where can we fill in the gaps? Can our program fill in gaps where there are gaps? And if it can't fill in those gaps, what can we do to help support filling those gaps? So we see ourselves as an absolute member of a team that has created an amazingly strong nutrition education here in the county. So we look forward to being able to still work with Deborah, who has a different position now, but is going to stay in the county, still providing some support and guidance in nutrition education. So we look forward to continuing to work with her and working with Gary and others here in your county for nutrition education. So without much more explanation of EFNEP, I'd like to introduce Jessica Conde, who is our newest nutrition educator.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes. My name is Jessica Conde and I'm the new educator for EFNEP. As you can see, you guys are getting a little brochure that talks a little bit about my, our program here. So if you guys open it up, it talks, our less, our program is focused on eight lessons. Each lesson touches one subject and we talk about that subject for one hour and within that hour, I also enhance the lesson with prompts and other materials. So for example, if you guys look at the first one, it's getting moving. So we talk about what are the simple things that we could do every day in life. So instead of parking, finding the closest parking to the grocery, park a little bit further to get the extra walk, how to plan shop and save, we talk about how to enhance more foods and vegetables into our diet, whole grains, building strong bones. So EFNEP is there to improve the nutrition intake and select and purchase foods. It improves practices and food storage and safety and sanitation, and how to manage our budgets, because that's something that is coming up a lot lately. Again, each lesson is one hour and within that hour, we, I'm going to show you guys a little bit of what I do. So with each lesson, I carry my little bins around. I do very simple things. So for example, this is one of the, the one that I get the most wiles and ahs out of. So what are we serving our dinners in? And shockingly, we get, I get this response. This is what our dinners are being served in. What is, what should our dinners be served in? Our dinner should be served in this. So I get the difference, you know, I want, I want them to see the difference and it makes a difference. At the end of my eight weeks, I've had responses where people say, you know what, your problem, your program has really helped me. It's changed me and my life. It's changed my diet, it's changed the way my family thinks and the way they eat. Another, so does anyone know what our portion size should be for protein? The size of a deck of cards. So then the question is, do we actually know what a size of a deck of cards looks like? And I usually get the answer, no. So this is when I come in, I'm like, this is what our portion size should look like. And it's amazing to know that this is not how we're eating. And for a long time, that wasn't how I was eating. So now I, and they, they see me and they see them and I show them the differences and at the end of, as you know, each class, I also give them a food demonstration and tasting and I hand out healthy recipes. So they become me and I become them and like I, Dorina, said, on my way to these classes, I'm calling them up through my smartphone and, you know, hey, I'm on my way to class. Are you coming, not? Are you coming? Are you coming? And more than likely, they're usually there. Of course, we get a lot of rain and stuff, but most, they're always there. They stick around, they see that we care and they're there. And I think that's all I have for you guys. Do you guys have any questions?
Where are you offering classes?
Um, I actually, right now, I am working with a lot of the Family Resource Centers. So I have contacted, touched the Family Resource Center here and I'm looking forward to working with a lot of other organizations here within Del Norte County.
Any questions?
Any questions to supervisor?
I have a couple of questions about teens, because if they're, how do you determine their income eligibility? Or are they just eligible?
It's through the family earned income. So, and, and right now, I'm not sure where EFNEP is going to fall into the younger-than-19-year-old community members, because you had such a strong program already in the schools. So I want to make sure that we're working with Deborah and others, and Gary and others to make sure that we're complementing what has already been done. So I'm not, I'm not quite sure if we're going to be in the schools yet.
But it's had.
I'm sorry?
It's had a strong program.
It's had a strong program, that's right. And we are, that's right.
It's gone away as a.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. With Deborah in her new position, I think some of, for example, Harvest of the Month will probably maintain. And so if we and EFNEP can complement those monthly foods with recipes and lessons in the classrooms, we will work with everyone here. But because I really see us as a team player, I want to make sure everybody knows who's doing what, so that there's no overlap.
I'm just real concerned because I'm a school teacher in my day job and food insecurity is one of the biggest issues that the kids that I serve have. And in fact, if there's an argument or a fight at my school and I have fairly tough kids, it's usually wrapped around food. That somebody took my burrito or some, you know. So it's, the food insecurity in our community is.
It's huge.
Huge. Because of the, the food stamp, I don't know what you call it anymore, but the $5 a day just doesn't cut it for families and it's just getting, it's getting more intense.
I agree 100%. Our nutrition education program doesn't provide any support for families or youth or adults without families to actually purchase food. I have, I have these two programs, but also beyond that, I have work that I'm interested at the policy level of doing work and that's where I see these issues really coming out, playing themselves out at policy levels. So I'd love to talk with you further at some point to see where are some of those areas within policy that can be seamed up or introduced to start to address that.
Any other questions? Supervisors? Supervisor Gillan? Dorina, Jessica, thank you very much for the presentation. You mentioned, Dorina, it's a free eight-week program. Who pays for that?
Yes. We receive our funding from the USDA. So it's actually directly from the USDA goes to Cooperative Extension. So our program is a Cooperative Extension program funded by the USDA, so.
So the taxpayer pays for it.
That's right, that's right.
You can understand my concern when, and I can use the analogy of dirt as money, that if we go to Washington or Sacramento, we dig a 40-foot hole and we sprinkle it around the state and it provides a service, at some point, it comes back to the taxpayer, either in a, some kind of an assessment of higher tax or something like that. And clearly our taxpayers are overburdened as it is. I just think we see the world a little bit differently and I appreciate your good efforts, but when I see that $53 million is going through our county budget, that's, I just did a quick check, it's about 50, it's over 50% of every dollar spent in Del Norte County is going to some form of population, and I'm using this figure of numerator, denominator, 5,330 people out of a population of 28,000. Is that what the figure was? 5,330?
Yeah, 28,000.
So that's, in my book, that looks like about 20%. So 80% are providing services to 20% and it looks as though the numbers are going up and it concerns me. I have genuine concern that I see this huge footprint of what I consider government over government and at the same time, where are our churches, where are outreach groups to provide these same services? That's where my thinking is at, is the community needs to come, not more government, but the community needs to come together and help people.
Yeah, I, that's why I spoke with Supervisor McClure. Yeah, I, I, that's why I spoke with Supervisor McClure about the issue of policy. I, I get it. I get this concern about taxpayer dollars. And is a nutrition education program the only thing that Cooperative Extension provides? Absolutely not. We don't provide only nutrition education. So what we do is also look at policy. And I mean, there's, this is a, a conversation to have over, you know, a meal over a long extended time, because how did we get to this point is the real question for me. And I think that's, that's not a conversation to have here. I, I think that's a conversation to have, but not here.
I agree with you. I agree with you. It's not a conversation we can solve.
Okay, let's, let's.
Let me respond. Chair. Let me respond by just saying to you that we need to figure out a way, not how do we get to here, but how do we reverse this trend?
Okay, we're off topic. Let's, let's come back to, I mean, realistically, this is about the 4H program, the Cooperative Extension. You have questions or comments on this program specifically? That's what the, the presentation's in. I did have a question, though.
Yes.
In regards to that. And before, we had a part-time employee in Delnor County, Deborah, Deborah White. And so we were assured at the last presentation last year that we would have regular visits up here and a regular presence. And my question is, how often are you up here?
I'm either myself, for the 4H program, either myself or Sandy Southrum, who is the program representative, is here at least once a month. For the FNAP program, we're looking at about two days a week. And the reality of the state budgets is that we will never get to the place that we once were in Cooperative Extension, where we had a program that was completely funded in each county. So we're doing these collapses across counties. So that's, that's what, right now, it looks like for 4H and for FNAP.
Okay, 'cause, you know, that, that is one of the big concerns going forward.
Yes.
And we do a lot of partnerships with Humboldt County, and for, you know, due to probably population base more than anything else, most of the money goes down south. And so we want to make sure that we are at least retaining what, what should be coming in this direction, and, and that's why it's important to, because to be quite honest, I haven't seen a lot of presence of 4H in the last year. And that's disturbing, because I saw a lot more of it prior. And so I'd just like to bring that to your attention, that we, we still want to have the program up here, but we.
Great.
Make sure that we're not all the time getting sucked down to Humboldt County.
Right. And I encourage you all to hold us to our commitment to be in part of Delnor County as well, to have a presence here as well.
And I thank you for the work that you do do.
Thank you.
It's very necessary and beneficial to our constituents. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, at this, at this time, I'll entertain a budget motion on the, or budget transfers.
Move to approve budget transfer 0401, 0403, 0404, 0405, 0406, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 on our agenda.
Okay, it's been moved.
Second.
Second. Any public comment on budget transfers? Seeing no public comment? Tony, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, those have been moved and approved unanimously. Going back to item 13. Prove and establish the position of a Director of Public Health Officer effective April 23, 2013, as requested by a Director of Health and Human Services. Supervisor Gitlin, you requested this get pulled off the agenda for discussion.
I did, Chair Sullivan. Mr. Blatnick, have we ever had a deputy public health officer before?
Not officially, no. This will be the first time that we're creating this.
So why are we doing that?
We're actually doing it for very good reasons. The, the county administrative officer and I both felt that it would be important. We've always had a backup officer, we've always had someone who was available when the officer was on vacation, out of town, sick, whatever. There was always someone, one of their colleagues essentially, that either volunteered or the public health officer paid for themselves in some relationship for backing them up. And so what we are doing now is we're actually putting this, we're going to formalize this. So whoever that physician is, right now, Dr. Bundell's been kind enough to be available when Dr. Martinelli is not available. He will be our, if he agrees, he will be our deputy public health officer. He will have all of the privileges and rights that are associated with being the deputy public health officer. And there'll be no expense to the county.
No, I, I saw that. It's a volunteer position. That's quite magnanimous of Dr. Bundell. Does the fact that Dr. Martinelli permanently residing in Santa Barbara County factor into this conversation?
Not really. I, I think, I think maybe it brought to light the fact that we need to really formalize this kind of thing that we've had over the years. And I think Jay Serene and I talked about it a few months back and felt, let's do it. And, because now we have, you know, responsibilities that warrant having a badge, this kind of thing. And so we felt that it would be appropriate to have the deputy be able to walk into the emergency operations center. They'll have a badge and ID if they need to be there, those kinds of things. We just never really had that over the years.
Mr. Blatnick, how much money does the dep, the public health officer make? What is his salary?
I don't know. I have to get back to you on that.
Well, I actually have the information. I was hoping you'd give it to me. I actually have it, because it's a Public Records Act of 1968 and updated 2007. He makes $2,800 a month, and he's in, I'm concerned, he's living in Santa Barbara County, and I'm concerned that he's not able to do his job, and maybe.
He is able to do his job very effectively and very well.
Well, how many hours does he, what are his hours? What is, what does he do? How many hours a month does he do this for?
I'll have to get back to you on that. I can't tell you specifically how many hours they provide. The public health officer has always provided much of their time by phone, in the office, and remember, they're available 24/7 by phone.
Well, I, I have some questions. I appreciate you not running away on this second answer, get these questions answered, Mr. Blatnick. They're just simple questions. That you have indicated to me the difficulty in finding a public health officer. You said that in an email. And let me just ask my question here. I've been contacted by three local MDs who are interested in the public health officer position, possibly a fourth. So I don't know if it's appropriate now, Chair Sullivan, is appropriate to introduce a motion that the Delnor County Public Health Officer should reside in Delnor County and physically inhabit that residence at least 180 days a year? Is that appropriate to make that motion out?
It wouldn't be right now at this point. It would be something to, to bring up with the director, and, because it is a contract thing at that point. And I, at this meeting, no, because we haven't listed on the agenda for, for voting on, take action on. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yeah, I, Gary and I have had this discussion before, Dr. Martinelli not residing in Delnor County. And, you know, and I asked basically the same questions. Does he fulfill what we need him to do? The answer was yes. I was perfectly satisfied with that and the way that, that he has been accessible and the, the needs of this county. Having said that, though, would there be an advantage, Gary, to having somebody local here all the time?
Well, I think there's always an advantage to having people local. We don't have, to my knowledge, any requirements, and it is a county position for people to reside in Delnor County. It's certainly something I think we should talk about. I can discuss it with the county administrative officer and see where, you know, where that goes. It's always been a struggle in recruitment and retention of physicians. We do have a good lead on one physician who's expressed a strong interest, and this sort of may be a new point, but it could happen again. And so I still think it's worth discussing this further.
Well, I think Dr. Martinelli's always, like I said, I mean, he's kind of hung in there, really.
Yes, for us.
More than anything, hung in there for us, more than, more than I think the, the other way around, and he, he always has been accessible.
Yeah, he's, he has a tremendous background. He's been our public health officer for many years. He knows the players, he knows the system. He's just been phenomenal. We're definitely getting our money's worth out of Dr. Martinelli.
Any, any other questions? Okay. I did, Gary, I did have one question of you. I, I think my concern more going forward, because we've gotten a lot of comments and questions from the public as to.
Sure.
And it was mentioned in the paper also, the public health officer not living here locally.
Yeah.
My bigger concern is succession planning, because the board as a whole has had succession planning, and that's been a priority in each of the departments.
Yes, sir.
And right now, due to the difficulty of, of finding somebody, as you said, Dr. Martinelli, I think Supervisor Hemmingson put it in there, has, has stuck it out and helped, helped the county in a lot of respects. Do, what is our succession planning? I guess would I?
Isn't that what we're voting on?
I think that's exactly what we're voting on today.
Yeah.
Is looking at having a deputy and really being able to recruit deputies in the future who will maybe perhaps one day become your next public health officer. So I think this formalizes that. Gives us a better opportunity to do that.
Through our discussions just recently, one of the concerns that I had in dealing with it from the emergency services end is that in order for somebody to walk into the EOC, you have to be correctly recognized, basically. You have to have that standing. And having a deputy in place allows, you know, if, if the health officer isn't available, that person can walk in and have some credibility. Also, you know, it's not just in first response, but basically second response. The other thing that I think might not have been discussed is that we have been discussing what that succession plan might be. We have had difficulty in the past finding somebody that would, would be available for, as a public health officer, for the amount of money that we've, we've had available. But I think we're in the, in the middle of that process of, of looking around at what the, you know, what the interest might be. And if Supervisor Gitlin has people that are interested, we'll certainly look at that, too. We would eventually put it out and allow people to come in and, and compete in that sense. But in the past, it's been very difficult to get somebody to commit. And so that's, that's the situation we're in right now. Having Dr. Bundell there as a backup certainly assists our operation overall. You have to have a body that's available. And it's not to say that Dr. Martinelli cannot do it by phone, because he certainly can. Most of the work is done through the public health, through the nurses, and also through our environmental health specialists. They're the, the boots on the ground. But we, we've discussed it. We're looking into that at this point, too.
Okay. What was the memo I saw regarding Dr. Raywall?
Dr. Raywall has expressed an interest, a strong interest, and he was our public health officer prior to Dr. Martinelli. So we're hoping that he will, he's having conversations with Dr. Martinelli right now, and we should hear back very soon. But if that isn't successful, and we'll certainly follow up your lead, Supervisor Gitlin, if we're not successful in the next few days or week, then we'll go ahead and do a statewide recruitment. One of the issues that does come up when we're looking at a public health officer, there's a lot of training outside of being an MD that, that you're required to do, and there's a commitment. And full-time doctors have not, have been reluctant to jump into that type of a commitment. And I, you know, if, if they're not aware of what that is, they can be made aware of it through the, through the process, and we'll, we'll be able to look at individuals at that point.
Okay. All right, thanks. Tony, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
No.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to legislative and budget matters.
I'll try to.
CAO Serene.
Try to make it as quick as possible. There, there are various bills out there. We have recently sent out our annual federal request to delegates that's basically outlined in our legislative platform. So it's an annual request through our advocates, and that information will go out. It's, like I said, very consistent with, with the board has previously passed. Was going to bring the board to light on SB 570, which is a, is legislation regarding public records requests. One of the interesting parts is that it would require local agencies to have available credit card machines. And as you know, not every one of our offices have those, and that's an expense to the local government. We'll, we'll be discussing that with our advocates and how to best approach that and try to have that reduced to some extent. That's what, for those departments, I believe it's around $500 to be able to provide that machine. And if you don't have any other use for it, public records requests don't come in every day. And so that's an interesting one. Most of the other issues that we had talked about earlier, Cal's PERS increases or the potential for increases will have potential significant impact on small counties as well as other counties. But, you know, in our case, any increases in PERS will have an effect on our budget. And the prison population reductions that were spoke of earlier will stay very, very much involved in those discussions, because as those come forward, they will have an effect on our county. And if, if those repeat offenders end up in our jails, they will certainly have a financial impact on our county. Budget-wise, you will probably be seeing some information come up every meeting now. We have our requested budgets, and we'll, we may approach them a little differently this year, and you may see those before we have the meetings, or you may see a, an amended version. Obviously, they're requests. As the requests come in, we will sit down with the department, see who has legitimate requests, in our opinion, regarding the financing for their departments, and then come forward to the board for any type of direction at that point. Typically, the board has given us the direction of staying within the services and supplies from the previous year, within reason. Personnel costs will always rise, so we'll be looking at those. And then the departments with the largest impact will be addressed through meetings. So we'll be, begin those meetings probably in the next week, week and a half, to start those discussions. And, you know, the board has seen the directions that were sent out from the auditor, controller, and myself earlier. We're on schedule, and we'll be dealing with that over until June, late, the last meeting in June, when we have an adopted recommended budget. We would hope to have a final at that point, but we'll see how that all works.
Supervisor Finnegan, you had something legislative matters there?
Yeah. Did we ever weigh in on Senate Bill 740, Padilla's, on the modification for eligibility requirements and funding through the California Advanced Services Fund, basically for broadband infrastructure to get it into rural areas?
Yeah, I think we did that two meetings ago.
Did we?
Yeah, yeah.
Just confirming, because they, they moved the date. It was supposed to be the 16th, now it's the 23rd.
Yeah, there was, I think there was only three of us here that day, so.
Yeah, I will note that we've been getting these alerts into us on legislation, and they've been accelerated. So a lot of times, we're reacting through our advocates before the board has a chance to even weigh in.
Excellent.
So when you see a letter, you, it's because we have the time to get the letter. And if you don't, we're using our ledge platform to get our word out through our advocates.
Good. All right. All right, at this point, we will adjourn the meeting till the next, next scheduled board meeting.